Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the January meeting of your Lewisville Town Council. Hope you all are having a wonderful evening and getting prepared for what we suspect is the major snow event of the season. As we say, we'll all believe it when we see it. I don't want you to run out to the grocery stores right now because you can't get in the parking lots. So they'll restock the shelves tonight. We'll have fresh milk and bread and everything else on the shelves, I'm guessing, in the morning. Very good, council members. Welcome. We'll do our roll call to start our meeting this evening. Ms. Welch.
Here.
Ms. Hunt.
Happy Thursday.
Mr. Smithman.
Good evening.
Doc Sadler.
Present.
Mr. Franklin.
Present.
Ms. Foster.
Present.
Very good. The mayor's present along with town staffers, Stacy Tolbert, our planner, Pam Orrell, our finance officer, Will House, our attorney, Ryan Moser, our public works director, Sergeant PJ Stringer, our community policing, and Dora Moore, who we don't have a visual on, but she is our town clerk. Welcome, folks. God, you all could be with us this evening. Bo, will you please take a moment and lead us in our invocation?
Be happy to do it. Let's pray. God, our Father, we give you thanks for this day. We give you thanks for this new month of January, a month of new beginnings. Help us to take advantage of new opportunities. We also give you thanks for the memory of the man whom we celebrate, whose birth we celebrate on Monday. We ask that we all be prepared to judge each other, not by the color of our skin, but by the content of our character. Give you thanks for this, this town and its staff and its elected officials. We ask that this meeting be conducted with wisdom and courage this evening as we go about the town's business. Be with us all and be with us during the inclement weather that may be to come. We ask all these things in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Bo. Appreciate that a lot. Um, council member Welch, will you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance this evening?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Thank you. Council members, we do have an agenda. We do have one change. Ms. Moore, do you want to walk us through that change for this evening?
Yes, sir. Earlier today, we sent you proposed revisions to the draft December 9th retiring council meeting minutes. So if you approve of those in the consent agenda, Bo, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe you can just approve them as presented?
Yes, that'd be fine. That's part of the consent agenda. So I think we would, the motion would be to adopt the agenda as amended, including that change to the consent agenda.
Brought to you by the Department of Redundancy Department. Ms. Moore, you also have an addition, I believe it is 11D that wasn't on our initial agendas that went out.
That item was on there yesterday afternoon when it was sent.
It did make it to the agenda. Very good.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, council members, that, that one was at yesterday afternoon and you got the revised agenda. That is for computers for Mary Alice Warren Community Center. With that, are there any revisions or changes or additions to the agenda for this evening? Ms. Hunt?
Um, I didn't, and I may be looking at a different agenda, but um, was there any nonprofit that was going to be for consideration this evening?
No, we got one under the wire and it's not time sensitive.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, it came in just this today and it'll be on the agenda for February.
Ms. Hunt, is that from the, is that from the Louisville Clemens Chamber?
Um, no, that one, there was one from Louisville Clemens that is expected to come over and then another one from West Forsyth Christian Preschool.
We got the one from West Forsyth Christian Preschool and we'll have that on the agenda for next month.
Very good. Okay. Thank you. Council members, any other questions or changes, revisions, additions? Not, will entertain, entertain a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Full approval.
Dr. Sadler makes the motion. Mr. Smithman makes the second. Any discussion? Ms. Welch?
Approved.
Ms. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Smithman?
Aye.
Mr. Franklin?
Ah.
Ms. Foster?
Aye.
Doc Sadler?
Aye.
Mayor's eye. That is unanimous. Thank you very much. Moving on to the consent agenda. Any other changes or additions to the consent agenda? If not, will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Move for approval.
Ms. Welch makes the motion. Is there a second? Dr. Sadler makes a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Welch?
Approved.
Ms. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Smithman?
Aye.
Mr. Franklin?
Ah.
Ms. Foster?
Aye.
Doc Sadler?
Aye.
Mayor's eye. Ladies and gentlemen, if you wonder why we go through these roll calls as opposed to folks just raising their hands or saying aye, aye, all at one time, part of the state requirements for virtual meetings is that we do a roll call of members so that we can be sure that we're on the record for every vote. So while we would like to be a little more efficient about it, it's, that's how we have to, we're required to go about taking a vote. Sergeant Stringer? You have your snow boots?
Good evening. How are y'all?
Fine, thanks.
Um, so got some stats to finish out the year for you. Hank, if you'll pull up, 637 calls for service in the month of December. We finished out the year with 7,541 calls for service. Security checks, 281, 40, 47, traffic violations, and our alarms were 20, which is fairly low. We finished out the year with 227 alarm calls versus 36 where we were at, or 23 last year, and still running about the same response time. So we'll have a year in calculations and I'll get some comparison. I'm in the process of putting some together, some stuff together for the budget retreat to hopefully present to, to the council. But does anybody have any questions about the stats or the calls for service before I move on to the, to a couple little safety tips? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Sergeant Stringer. I don't think you meant for December priority call response time to be 45 minutes.
No, no, no.
Decimal, just decimal.
Yes. It should be, it should be four, it should be 4.5. Yeah. Yeah. If we're getting priority calls at 45 minutes, we gotta, we gotta.
Alright.
Yeah. So, so I just wanted to touch base. Hank, you can take that, that off the, with the, with the weather coming in. I don't know if everybody's aware. Have you seen, if you see a stranded motorist, have you ever noticed a car slid off in the ditch or power lines down and happened to notice that it's got yellow caution tape around it? Has anybody ever seen that?
Yes.
So with, with your, with your guys, hell, spread this word to the community. Because what happens is if the fire department or a sheriff's deputy or a trooper actually goes out to a downed tree or a downed power line or a car that slid off in the ditch, if it has the yellow caution tape anywhere on that car, that means that that car has already been checked out by a first responder. So that's important to know because with all this snow coming in, the deputies, if they have to go out unnecessarily, and, and they developed that several years ago to try to cut back on people trying to go out to multiple calls for the same vehicle. So power lines, the fire department uses this standard. Anybody with, within the first responders actually does that. So be mindful of that. If you happen to see a car slid off the side of the road, look for that yellow tape. Because if you call into highway patrol or call into county fire, they should ask if it's got that yellow tape around it. It may be a little harder to see with the snow, but if you find yourself in the, in the situation where you have to leave it, don't hesitate to call the non-emergency number and let somebody know that you're actually going to leave that car roadside. So we can cut down on some of this unnecessary traffic as the roads become hazardous, if that's the case. So.
Very good. Thank PJ. Any questions for Sergeant Stringer? Alrighty. You guys stay safe out there this weekend. It's gonna be, could be kind of messy.
Yes, sir. Y'all have a good evening.
Thank you, Sergeant Stringer.
Thank you.
Very good. Ladies and gentlemen, we are now at the, I'm sorry, Mr. Franklin, I saw your hand go up. Was that a goodbye?
I said I was just waving goodbye to PJ. I'm sorry.
Very, very good. Ladies and gentlemen, we've come to the first opportunity this evening for our public forum. I believe we have some information. There we go. For those of you who wish to call in this evening and just share your comments with the council, telephone number is there. It's the 646-558-8656 number. Always a good way is to go to lewisvillenc.net and click on tonight's meeting, which you'll find under the calendar. That'll give you the Zoom link to this meeting and then you can raise your hand and we can bring you in during these periods of time. Hank, do we have anybody who has joined the Zoom call and is raising their hand and wishes to speak?
We have plenty of people that are attendees. No one has raised their hand yet.
Very good. Ladies and gentlemen, this is, this is the first opportunity tonight. There'll be another one at the end of the meeting, but we will also have a public hearing this evening. The public hearing is regarding the rezoning petition for the property there on Williams Road at the 421 exit. So if you're here to speak about that or comment on that, please hold your comments to that particular point and we'll allow you to participate in the public, public hearing at that time. Very good. If not, Stacy, I believe we can go ahead and pull that down. We had no appointments this evening, but we do have the continuation of our public hearing. Folks, if you remember, we, we were to consider this in December, but we had some illness occur, so we continued, opened the public hearing and continued it until this evening. Stacy, would you like to go ahead and take us through the, the dossier on this one, please?
Oh. She'll be right back. She, we've got some folks in the council chambers who didn't get it. It was going to be on Zoom. So I let them in the council chambers. They're sitting in there now. She went down there to tell them how to connect it during the public hearing. She'll be right back.
Very good. So let us do this, folks. We'll go ahead and move on into our agenda and come back to that in just a moment. Pam, you have, under new business, you have our first item of new business, which is the authorization for the auditing services.
Right. It's a resolution 2020, excuse me, 2022-003. This is authorizing the auditing services for fiscal year 2021, 2022. The audit will have a base charge of $20,745. That's for the financial statement audit. In the event that a single audit is required, if there's one major program, there will be a flat fee of $4,000 charged on top of that. In the event there are multiple major programs, there will be an additional $2,500 charged for each additional major program.
Very good. Council members, we were, had a briefing on this, of course, last week at our regular briefing session. Any questions for Pam on this item? If not, we'll entertain a motion. Doc Sadler?
Yes. How is the determination made as to whether or not there will be a, a single major program audit or multiple audits or so forth?
Um, a single audit is triggered whenever we spend more than $750,000 in federal funds and/or we spend more than $500,000 in state funds. That triggers a single audit. And each funding source or each pot of money is considered a major program.
Okay, so under, in our current situation, is it likely that we're going to have those this year?
It's, it's hard to tell. I don't believe any of our transportation projects will trigger a single audit, but there's a possibility that our ARPA money may trigger a single audit in this current fiscal year.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Any other questions for Pam? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve. Mr. Smithman makes the motion. Mr. Franklin makes the second. Any additional discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Oh.
Yeah, you caught me. I really want to get back to that. You know, you know, that's, it's unconscious on my part. Ms. Welch?
Aye.
Ms. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Smithman?
Aye.
Ms. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Franklin?
Ah.
Doc Sadler?
Aye.
The mayor's eye. It's interesting that I just explained why we were doing that and then I proceeded to go on and not do that. So we'll check, we'll check my medication levels later and make sure everything's okay. Ryan, if you'd like to take us through, Stacy, you're back. You want to catch your breath?
The stairs got me. Running down and then running right back up.
Yeah, we'll take the next item. Let you catch your breath and we'll come right back to it. Ryan, you have a budget ordinance force, please, for lawn maintenance at Mary Alice Warren Community Center.
Yes, sir. Council members, this, we spoke about this last week. This is ordinance 2022-003, amending ordinance, budget ordinance 2021-001 in the amount of $3,575 for lawn maintenance at Mary Alice Warren Community Center.
Once again, council, we were briefed on this last week. Any questions for Ryan?
I had a question, please.
Yes, ma'am.
And I think this is probably elementary, Ryan, but would you go through with this, you know, how you get the, the bids and, and how many you get? You know, kind of what the procedure is. I've never been real clear. It seems like sometimes we just use the same people and, you know, do you always, are we required to have two or three bids? But if you wouldn't mind going through that one more time?
Hank, I don't know about the requirements. Are we required to even go out for bid?
Not at this level, Ryan. It's an informal bidding process.
Okay. Jane, I did go out, I had two people bid on this and obviously Yards Bus won the bid. Um, what, the folks, the folks that I, the other folks that I had go out for bid, they have done work in the past for the town. So I knew that they did good work.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that's very helpful. Hank, is there a, a limit that we don't really go out for a lot of bids? Or if there's a certain amount of money that will be expended, do we then go out?
I'm not aware that we've got a, a threshold, Ms. Welsh. Certainly the more expensive. The, the cutoff point for formal bidding, I believe, is at $300,000. So that, above that, you need to go out for formal bidding. Certainly below that, anything that was going to be $200,000, even if it's not formal, we're going to make sure that we get lots of, of informal bidding. And I think as the price goes down, we want to go out, for instance, we want to go out and get competitive bidding to make sure that pencils are sharpened when they give us the pricing. But often we have relationships with vendors who are doing current work and we know that efficiency wise, it's easier to have as few throats to choke in case something goes wrong with something like lawn maintenance. So we do want to try to, to pay attention to our current vendors that are especially doing workforce, but we also want to keep things honest when we go out and we try to get pricing.
Okay. Very helpful. Thank you both.
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions for Ryan? I'm sorry, Doc Sadler, go ahead.
I'm misremembering. I thought we had had some, at some point in the past, and it could have been a long time ago. I can't remember. But I thought we had some discussion about sort of generally getting bids, even though there's no requirement to do that for anything in excess of some dollar amount. I can't remember what the dollar amount is. $10,000 comes to mind, but I don't know if that's accurate. Fred or Mike, you may remember. But I thought we had that discussion at some time in the past, is even though the requirement is not there, just to keep us informed about what's going on in terms of how contracts are being let, that we would follow a procedure like that. Now, may, that may be, I'm remembering something that is a fantasy or something. So that's what I recall, though.
I just had, I knew that has to do with managers expenditure of funds and in coming back to council for approval of those expenditures, but I'd say to be corrected on that.
Yeah, we do have a threshold for whether or not a council, council has to approve the contract. That threshold's $10,000.
That sounds familiar.
Yes, that's, that's by our ordinance, for the budget ordinance as well. It's written in that way.
Very good. Any other questions? Not warranting a motion to approve this addendum to the contract?
I don't know. Are they approving the addendum to the contract?
You're actually approving a budget amendment. Let, let me make sure we're clear on this. This particular ordinance, this is an amendment to, to our budget ordinance, and it's increasing the budget for lawn maintenance. In the next item, item C, you're actually going to approve the change order.
Very good. Well, let's go ahead and take this one. We'll move on to that next one. Quickly, while we're still on the subject, maybe we have a motion on this, please? Dr. Sadler moves. Doc Sadler makes the motion. Is there a second?
Okay.
Ms. Hunt makes the second. Any further discussion? Ms. Welch?
Aye.
Ms. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Smithman?
Aye.
Ms. Foster?
Aye.
Doc Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Franklin, I get you in that mix. There we go. Everybody's jumping around on my screen here for some reason. Mayor's eye, that is unanimous. Thank you very much. Pam, let's go ahead and roll into that next one, then, as you made the clarification. Let's deal with that before we go back to our public hearing.
And the next one is resolution 2022-004. This is authorizing change order number one with yards by us for lawn maintenance at the Mary Alice Warren Community Center, and the change order is for $9,150 per year. And this is in a, this is related to the three-year contract that we have with yards by us.
Very good. Any questions for? Doc Sadler makes the motion. Is there a second? Mr. Franklin makes the second. Any further discussion? Ms. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Smithman?
Aye.
Mr. Franklin?
Ah.
Doc Sadler?
Aye.
Ms. Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Welch?
Aye.
Mayor's eye. That is unanimous. Thank you very much. Um, in fact, let's just go ahead and clean up all these guys real quick and before we go back to our, our, our public hearing, because we had just one more on our regular business. Pam, I believe you're going to present us a budget ordinance for computers.
Right. This is a budget amendment. It's ordinance 2022-004, amending budget ordinance 2021-001 in the amount of $3,827. This is to purchase two computers and one printer for the Mary Alice Warren Community Center and also one printer for the town planner.
Very good. Any questions? Not warranting a motion?
Don't move.
Ms. Welch makes the motion. Ms. Hunt makes the second. Any additional discussion? Mr. Franklin?
Ah.
Mr. Smithman?
Aye.
Ms. Hunt?
Aye.
Ms. Foster?
Aye.
Doc Sadler?
Aye.
Ms. Welch?
Aye.
Mayor's eye. That is unanimous. Alrighty, folks, let's go forward into the past and go back to our public hearing. Ladies and gentlemen, as you remember, we were, we were, we, we had done a public here, a scheduled public hearing on this for December. We continued to January. Stacy, I think you're prepared now to go ahead and give us the, the primary that we need to have to prepare for our discussion.
Yes, I'm going to share my screen and then after the staff presentation, Hank, I'll let you know the applicants. Or if you'd like, the applicants are Mike Cooper and Brad Klosterman are the two that are, that are present tonight as the applicants for the case.
Ms. Tolbert, would you like them to come in right now?
It, it doesn't matter.
I'll go ahead and do this.
Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. Okay, can everybody see that?
Yes, ma'am.
What does that look like? Does it have a notes page with it?
It does not.
Okay. So tonight, the, before us, this case L101, and the address is 771 Williams Road. This is a rezoning request. The property included, for the record, is identified as pin number 5875643831. It is 3.57 acres. The property is currently vacant and wooded. There isn't any structures on the property. And again, the issued address is 771 Williams Road. The property is currently zoned RS20. That is a residential, single-family zoning district with a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet. The request to rezone is to HBC, which is Highway Business Conditional Zoning, which also has a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet. The C again stands for conditional zoning, and you can see the uses requested are professional offices, services, business A, services, business B, services, professional, veterinary services, and school vocational or professional. So I wanted to go through with you so everybody could get an idea. I know this is a lot of text, but so everybody could get an idea of what these different uses that have been requested for the property are. Professional offices, these are the definitions that come straight from our Unified Development Ordinances. So professional offices are an office for engineering, architectural surveying services. It is what it sounds like. It's a professional office. Might be an insurance agent, might be a bookkeeper, real estate agent, that sort of thing. Services, business A, is an establishment engaged in providing services to businesses and to individuals. The current applicant, this is what his business fits into the closest. So what it is, is essentially, you know, they're going to go and they're going to provide services to, to a business, to an individual, maybe to a homeowner, something like that. Services, business B, is a little bit, a little bit step above the services, business A. It's more services that include to commercial and business establishments. Like they're going to provide a service strictly to a large business or a commercial business. The applicant does also fit in this one just a little bit. As you most are well aware, they are called advanced appliance. And they go and they provide HVAC services, appliance services to homes, to businesses, to commercial establishments, that sort of thing. They actually, this location will be what's considered their office, where their main, main offices are, the owner's offices are. Parts will be stored, that sort of thing. And then they actually go out, they, they don't do the work there on the site. They actually go out and go to wherever the actual appliance is to fix it to wherever the, the home may be or the business may be and so forth. School vocational or professional is a use providing education or training in business, commerce, language, other similar activity, like a trade, if you will. It's not a public school. It's not like grade school or anything like that. It would be considered vocational or professional. Like, like if Forsyth Tech had a class or so there or something like that, that is, that is where that would fit in. Services, personal, I thought, I thought we already went over that one.
You professional.
Okay. Services, personal, is strictly to individuals. So services, A, B, and personal, they, they're all very, very similar. The main difference is what, who, who they're providing that service to. So you have business A is individuals and businesses, business, services, business B is, is more higher-end commercial. And then personal is strictly individuals and that sort of thing. So, so again, they're all very similar in nature as to the type of service they provide. The only difference a lot of times is, is maybe what exactly service they're providing and who they're providing it to. So then the last one is veterinary services, any facility used for the purpose of giving licensed medical treatment to animals or pets, but also could have grooming, boarding, selling of pet supplies, that sort of thing. So these are actually the requests that were initially requested by the applicant, and I will, I will get to that a little bit later in my presentation. So you can see in the map before you, the, this is the property here. It abuts the off-ramp of, of Southbound 421 to Williams Road, to the, to the back of the property. Again, to the north is 421. And then the property fronts Williams Road. You can see at the corner of the property, across the road is DAB Road. That's the kind of orient you. If you can see where my cursor is, right over here where this HB zoning is, that is where the Liberty is. If, if that kind of helps you orient yourself. Um, i- if that kind of helps you orient yourself of, of where this property is located, right there in that corner of the intersection. So what I wanted to show you, um, is the preferred land use and the comprehensive plan. Um, of course, we do have a comprehensive plan that is, that is under draft, not approved. But, but I wanted to show you the comprehensive plans that, that are approved and are adopted that we have been going by for the last several years. This is the two thousand and fifteen land use, uh, preferred land use map in our current, um, comprehensive plan. You can see the property is circled, um, in green. The red that you see is that the preferred land use is commercial, um, for this property. So, so in two thousand and fifteen, preferred land use was commercial. Again, we have the two thousand and ten, right to your left, also, um, still remains commercial, um, as the preferred land use. And even back to two thousand and five, um, the preferred land use was commercial for this property as well. So over the years, through the, through the comprehensive plan and, and through the, uh, preferred land use maps, the property has remained, um, to be preferred as commercial. Um, mainly because of it, it, where it's located, how it backs up to four twenty-one and, and the access that can be provided to the property through four twenty-one. So before you is the site plan, um, I can bring this up in a different slide and zoom in and out if we need to. Um, but you can see the, the building on the property is pushed, uh, farthest to the, the four twenty-one ramp, away from the residential zoned property to, um, right there beside of it. Um, you can see there is landscaping, uh, type twenty buffer yard, excuse me, a twenty-foot type two buffer yard that's required. Around the property, you can see this dotted line is the forty-foot building setback that is required. Um, that is required whenever, whenever a commercial property abuts residential property. Um, that's not, not included in the downtown overlay. So, so that is included, that is a requirement of our U D O. Um, and the, again, the landscaping is a requirement of our U D O. Um, and they have, um, shown landscaping at the front of the building on the front facade. That is also, um, a requirement of our U D O for non-residential properties. Um, you can see there is parking spaces shown. Um, there is some landscaping that's required within the, the parking, um, areas, like little islands, that's shown, um, to, um, account for motor vehicle service area. Um, again, a requirement of our unified development ordinance. And then they do have, um, a solid waste area that will be, uh, completely screened and fenced, um, which again is another requirement of our U D O for non-residential properties. So moving forward, the planning board held their public hearing on October thirteenth. Um, there was people that spoke at that public hearing. And so because of the amount of discussion, um, the planning board asked to table, um, the discussion, um, for their vote until their October twenty-seventh meeting. Uh, what this, the, the reason behind this is they wanted to allow staff time to meet with the applicant to, to draft some conditions that would be placed on the rezoning upon approval. Um, to address the concerns of the area residents that came and spoke at the planning board meeting. Um, so, and, and I'll get to those added conditions in, in my next slide. Um, but the vote was held by the planning board and they unanimous, unanimous, unanimously approved recommendation, um, to the town council with the added conditions that, um, I met with and the applicant agreed to. So those conditions, uh, for the record, the front of the building identified as the street-facing facade shall be constructed of pedestrian scaled brick, wood, stone, cast stone, decorative concrete masonry, exposed architectural concrete, stucco, complimentary, non-vinyl siding, or a combination thereof, exposed vinyl siding, exposed metal siding, painted concrete, painted brick, painted concrete masonry and standard grade concrete masonry are not acceptable exterior matil- materials. Roofing materials exposed to view shall be standing seam, metal or copper concrete, slate or clay roof tile, or architectural dimensions, dimensional asphaltic shingles. Exposed roofing felt and standard three-tab asphaltic roof shingles are not allowed. That comes from our downtown overlay standards. This property is not considered to be in the downtown overlay. Um, but a lot of the concerns of the properties or the resident surrounding was the, the facade of the building. Um, and so that is why we added that particular, um, so that the street-facing facade would, would have facade requirements that were very similar to our downtown overlay. Um, the next one, the color of the building shall incorporate a single base color of no more than two compatible secondary minor accent colors. Natural earth, natural earth tones are encouraged, bright primary colors are discouraged and shall only be used as accent colors. That again is, um, something that comes from our ordinance for our downtown overlay. Uh, windows shall be added to all street-fronting facades and all parking lot-facing facades so as there are no significant changes in aesthetic appearance. Window shall, window shall be sized and oriented to be proportional to the building. Reflective mirror glazing is not acceptable. Plantings shall be installed along the west side of the building between the building wall and parking lot area. And the last one, this request shall be modified to eliminate the proposed use of veterinary services. Um, the planning board felt that the, the, the requested use of veterinary services was not one that was compatible with this area or that would fit well with this area. So one of the conditions was to remove that particular proposed use that the applicant was requesting. Um, and so that was, that was one of the conditions that was gonna be placed, um, upon approval, that they would not be allowed to have veterinary services at this location. So does anybody have any specific questions or I can also bring up, um, the, um, site plan if I need to?
Dr. Sadler?
I've got a few questions. Uh, thank you Stacy for the presentation. I thought it was, well, well done and thorough. I have a question regarding, you mentioned that the applicant had requested, uh, zoning is services business A, is that right? And in your, in your description of services business A, it said, I thought, and, and correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong about this, I thought it said primarily, uh, services to business and with limited services to individuals. Is that, is that right?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
All right. So when it says primarily services to, to businesses, uh, is that a ninety percent rule or an eighty percent rule? Or, or is there some percentage rule related to that?
They, in our definition, there is not, um, a percentage rule, um, as far as what they, how many businesses versus individuals they are supposed to serve under that use.
So how would we determine if they are in compliance, uh, once the business i- is in place? If approved?
I don't, I don't know that I necessarily understand your question. Um.
Well, if, if we don't know what the breakdown is that would create compliance, i.e. if it's primarily business, that means ninety percent of the time they're taking care of business-related activities or doing business-related activities and ten percent of the time they're doing individual-related or some other combination. If we, if we don't know that, uh, then how would we ever? I mean, why is it even in an ordinance? I- if we, if we don't have some sort of a formula to determine what that means?
Well, I, I would say that this, this is a definition that comes from the ordinance that was approved originally in ninety-one when, when Louisville Incorporated. So it is dated. Uh, all, all of our definitions are fairly dated, if you will. Um, but, but one thing that underneath, in, in our ordinance underneath, and this, this might be helpful, but it also states, um, it goes back to the standard industrial classification, which again, nobody really uses anymore, but our ordinance still refers to that. It says primarily engaged in providing repair and other services to businesses and to a lesser extent, individuals that by the nature of their operation have little impact on adjoining property due to noise, odor, vibration and/or air or water pollution. All repair items and supplies are stored in enclosed buildings. These uses include repair of small or precision equipment such as medical, dental, laboratory or drafting equipment. So that, that's just a, a, and I guess where this definition is pulled from, from years and years and years ago.
Right.
Um, but I, I don't think the intent of the ordinance was, was necessarily to say, uh, for, for any of these definitions, if you will, to say that you can only serve, you know, eighty percent of businesses and twenty percent of individuals. It, it's just what the type of business or the type of service that they're providing, um, could, could generally be to businesses, but in some instances, yeah, some instances may be to individuals.
Yes, I, I follow that. Uh, I, I don't know, well, i- i- and I don't really know enough about the nature of their business to know what kind of activity at the site would occur as, as a result of providing services to businesses versus individuals. That would be a, uh, a question I would have. I mean, I mean, if, if it's, if, if, if there's a lot of activity generated, uh, as a result of doing work for individuals in terms of flow in and out of the property, then that would be one thing. If, if they do all of their servicing away from the property, then it's a non-issue.
And that, that is what they do. They do all of their servicing away from the property. They go to an individual's home or they will go to that business establishment. Um, the int- the intent of what their business is and, and the applicant, um, and the business owner is here with us tonight that he can, he can answer those questions further if needed. But, um, the intent of their business is that the public don't, doesn't really come to this location. Um, they, they may very seldomly to, to buy a part. I would assume if they want to fix something on their own, if you will, like their, um, their dryer is broke or something and they want to fix something on their own, they, they may come to the site. But, but they're not bringing anything to the site for them to be serviced on-site.
So they're gonna have a showroom and a parts, just sale of parts and that kind of thing at the location, is that?
I would, I would want Mike, uh, Mr. Cooper or Mr. Klosterman to answer those questions. I'm not a hundred percent sure about how their, their floor plan will actually be set up inside.
You know, I see them there, so could somebody respond?
Yeah, Mike, take a stab at it.
Maybe, um, on there now, but, uh. Yes, sir. We, we have a small counter that, uh, would allow somebody to come in and purchase a part. We don't have what you would consider a true showroom of anything. Um, so if a person wanted to come in and buy a part to try to fix something themselves, they could, but, that's not very often nowadays.
Okay, so the amount of traffic in and out of there is minimal, is that what I'm to understand?
Correct.
Correct.
The office staff.
Okay. Uh, the other thing you mentioned Stacy was something about noise, which is a question I had. Uh, so they're not gonna be much to know, uh, this is a question that's not a statement. Noise generation at the site, what is that gonna be like?
It should be very minimal. Uh, like I said, it's just, it's just an office location for them. Um, they, they currently have an office on Renalda Road in which they're wanting to, to move, um, their business to Louisville. Um, A, because they're, they're Louisville residents and B, um, because they, there's a lot of safety concerns and security concerns at their location on Renalda. Um, but a- again, a lot of what they do is, is you might see that the trucks around town or around the county, the advanced appliance trucks, um, they don't even park those trucks on-site. Um, the employees are allowed to take those trucks home, or those vans rather, home. Um, again, for security purposes, so they're not just left alone in, uh, to, to attract vandalism or anything like that at the site. Um, so, so they're allowed to take them home and, and also if they happen to have an on-call situation or something like that. So, um, you know, they, they, the office staff and the people who work for the establishment might come, um, to get a part or something like that, but the in and out traffic, um, will be minimal. And then also, you know, it, it's not attracting, um, like Mr. Cooper said, it's not attracting a lot of public in and out all day. It's not like a retail establishment, if you will, um, that would be attracting anything in and out all day long.
All right, and, uh, the final question I've got is, um, on the buffer. So i- i- is that buffer really going to, I don't know what a twenty-foot, uh, buffer, no, type-two buffer looks like. So how much screening does that give to the, is that a berm or something or is that just planting or?
It can be a berm. Um, I was gonna read for you, uh, the buffer yard standards for a type-two. cooperate with me here. For a type-two buffer yard, um, it is a medium-density screening designed to block visual content and create spatial separation between adjacent uses. And then ordinance gives four design options depending on how wide. Um, obviously, if, if the buffer is as little as fifteen feet, uh, the screening has to be much more dense. Um, if it gets to twenty feet, um, it allows for, um, trees, evergreen plants, supplemental evergreen shrubs. And then if it goes, there's, there's, um, requirements, if it's a thirty-foot wide buffer and then requirements if it's even a hundred-foot wide buffer. Um, so what they're proposing is a twenty-foot type-two buffer. And what that, um, is intended to do is, is be a visual blocker, um, between residential properties and, um, commercial properties.
Would a berm be inconsistent with the existing topography?
Yes, I believe it would.
All right, and, uh, when you talked about colors, you said that, uh, certain colors are encouraged. Is, is there a reason that the, that it's not a requirement if that's desirable?
Well, we, we took that, um, straight from the downtown overlay requirement. Um, and I think the planning board agreed that if, if it was a requirement such as that written e- exactly that way in the downtown overlay, then they didn't really want to be more restrictive, but yet they wanted to, um, you know, a- at least put in there to encourage the natural colors, um, just like we encourage the natural colors in the downtown overlay.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh, thank you.
Very good. Anyone else with questions? Uh, let's do Ms. Foster. Yeah, you're muted, Ms. Foster. There you go.
Still.
Maybe Melissa should go before me. Uh, so yeah, I have several questions, Stacy. Again, thank you for all of your work and the planning board's work. Um, I'll, I'll ask a few now and I suspect that when, after we get the public feedback, I may have some follow-up. But for now, just really quickly, I'm looking at your staff report. Um, you've put together three, um, which you called history-relevant zoning cases. Most of them are pretty old, two thousand one, two thousand three, nineteen ninety-nine. Can you just tell me in overview, not too specifically, why those?
Well, I will say we have not, what I try to look for is, um, a, you know, a rezoning that would be similar zoning districts that may be, um, you know, a similar type of business or, um, you know, a similar situation as far as if it's a budding residential or something like that. A lot of our more recent, uh, commercial rezonings have taken place where commercial is, is beside of it. Um, and so we, you know, we don't, we don't all have, um, you know, a, a ton of, of, um, history of zoning in the town that has been from residential to commercial. Um, I think most of our, our rezonings have been, um, you know, for subdivisions or for, for PRDs or, you know, stuff like that. So, um, but, but those are the types of things that I try to look for in, in something that's kind of most similar to, um, this particular, um, case.
Okay, so, so and a few, a couple of those, it looks like they actually weren't implemented, like the car wash.
Well, it was approved. That doesn't necessarily mean it got built.
Right, right.
Right, yeah.
So I see that with some of those, again, old, et cetera. Um, so the, the history, so I just wanna make sure I'm clear and connecting the dots here. So in January of, of last year, twenty twenty-one, the council approved, I think it was L one sixty-two, something like that, where the planning board brought forth, um, the defining the downtown core versus the downtown gateway, correct?
Right, well, in the downtown overlay as a whole. You know, we did, we did not have a specific map that, um, from years past that. We did not have a specific map that, um, from years past that, that was clear on where exactly that boundary was.
Right. So you guys were on the ball and wanted to make sure that was very clear and explicit. So at that time, it was the area that we're talking about for tonight is defined as our downtown gateway area.
Right. Well, this property is no longer, it used to be considered in the downtown gateway area, but it is no longer considered in the downtown gateway area.
Okay.
Not, that's why there's, there's no facade requirements on this property.
Okay.
That, that's why the planning board went, went a little above and beyond and, and added those, those few facade requirements. Um, but, and, and the applicant agreed to those, even, even though they're not required.
And so the reason was pulled out of downtown gateway?
Uh, the planning board felt, and I'm going back from, from, from old discussions, but, um, whenever, and, and we discussed this a little bit during their case in October, but I think the, the planning board pretty much kind of felt that this area, um, with it still being preferred land use of commercial through all the years, that it, it wasn't really connected to downtown like the other properties are. Um, with it being kind of on the outskirts a little bit, um, not, not even across the road from Liberty, but more so across the road and, and across another road. Um, so they, they wanted to kind of take a lot of the restrictions and limitations off the property, um, because it didn't necessarily feel like it was, it, you know, certainly, um, was specifically downtown. If that makes sense.
Yeah, I have, what I hear you saying is the downtown gateway areas are defined where we have our welcome to Louisville sign coming from, I guess that's what.
Roundabout, yeah.
Horse kind of thing. So even though this too is a, a place where you're getting off of the four twenty-one, you're just heading in in a different direction. It was thought at that time that that didn't make sense for it to be considered a gateway. So I hear that.
Right.
Um, so also, um, just for purposes for everyone and myself included, I want to be clear. So the legacy thirty, um, update, and this is in Stacy's section where she's looking at conformity to plan. She's looking at all kinds of documents historically to say, here's why this fits. So the, the legacy twenty thirty update identifies this area as suburban under GMA three. And when I look that up, I see sort of some goals for that. Can you just speak very briefly to what GMA three? And I've got a little bit of information on that. So.
Mo- most of the town is GMA three. Um, the downtown area is GMA one.
Right.
Um, and then in the very, very rural areas of town closer to the river on the western side, there is a, a little bit of area that's GMA five that's kind of meant to be rural. So if you go from, from growth management area one, that's what GMA is growth.
Thank you.
Um, GMA one is, is dense, commercial. Um, you're kind of moving to two, you're moving to three is kind of middle of the road. Um, suburban neighborhood uses, but also a little bit of commercial mixed in. Um, and then you kind of move even further to, to more rural to GMA five. Um, and so this, the GMA three, which is again, most, all of, of what, um, minus the downtown area, um, that the town of Louisville is considered to be in, um, is GMA three, which, which again is kind of middle of the road. Um, mostly suburban neighborhoods, but then you do, um, have the opportunity for some commercial uses mixed in. A lot of those uses come where, um, water and sewer may be available. Um, water especially, we, we don't necessarily have a lot of areas in town that, that sewers available. Um, and so, you know, that, that's kind of where, where that three comes in. It's just kind of middle of the road on that sliding scale, if you will.
Right. Thank you. That's helpful. And then I guess the last question is, uh, for me at this time. Uh, so we've just, we just approved the master parks and rec plan. As a council, what was it? Last month, a couple of months ago?
Uh-huh.
And we now have, the planning board has just received or have, have been reviewing the draft updated comprehensive plan. So you had mentioned that you guys were looking at the twenty fifteen comprehensive plan. What's difficult is the pa- over the past year, there is new information that we have a consultant taking a look at. Was that considered at all, or do you, did you have to pretty much just focus on, I would suspect, the, the twenty fifteen comp plan?
Yes, because, because our new plan is not adopted.
Right.
Um, it's, it's not one of those things that's kind of put into law, if you will, because it's not adopted like our other comp plans are. And so when the application came in, you know, I mean, it, it, we've been working on this even since probably August, I believe, um, for, for it to finally get to the planning board in October and then, and then here we are. Um, with it, with it being a rezoning is a long process. Um, we didn't have a draft before us even then. Um, and so twenty fifteen comp plan is, is the, is the main comp plan that we've been looking at because that is the most recent adopted comp plan.
Right. Makes sense. And yet we have this new, well, some information for consideration as we are looking at our growth and development land use plan.
Right.
Sitting on the, on the shelf, ready to be received by council. Okay. Thank you very much, Stacy. I appreciate your time.
Very good. Ms. Hunt, I believe you were next.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, Stacy, thank you. This is very informative. Um, a couple of questions. One, on the north side of the property, as you're coming off that, um, four twenty-one exit ramp from, if you're heading back, I guess it's south from, or west to east, I don't know. Um, but as you're getting off, there's a pretty big slope on that, on that side of it, on the north, kind of the north side of it. Um, is there any requirement for some of those trees? I know there's a twenty-foot buffer. It says twenty-foot row buffer, um, at that point, but is there going to be any? Is there any ordinance or anything requiring them to keep some of those trees?
Yes, that, they are, um, also governed by the thoroughfare overlay district that's in our unified development ordinance that requires, um, a certain amount of buffer off of our highways, which would be four twenty-one in this case, um, including the ramps. And so whatever that right-of-way is for four twenty-one, um, that thoroughfare overlay requires them to, to, to maintain screening, um, or, or landscaping, whatever's there. Um, maybe do some infill if, if they have to, if it, if, once they take out what they need to take out for the building. If it's scraggly, um, then they'll have to put back whatever, um, will need to be put back in order to uh, meet the requirements of the thoroughfare overlay that, that is governed along four twenty-one.
Okay. So that you've got thoroughfare and then, and then do you start the twenty-foot row buffer at that point?
No, that, that would be what the buffer is.
Okay. All right.
Yeah.
Um, and then my other question, I see where it states on the site plan that there's a septic option one. Um, what, and, and the building is positioned kind of away from the current residential. Um, I think that that intent, that was intentional, but to get it as far as possible away from residential. Um, what, what happens in the event that the septic can't go in that spot? I mean, is that where that's going to go? And then they have to reposition the building? What are the alternatives in that case?
We do have the option of a minor staff change. Um, if it's minor enough, it just has to shift a couple of feet or so. Um, then the applicant has been instructed that, um, you know, a lot of times when, when you have a developer, say for stormwater, from wherever, septic systems might go, that sort of thing, they, they don't want to go through and do, um, you know, and what, it's called an ATC, an authorization to construct permit for a septic system. Um, they do perk tests and they do preliminary designs of, of options of where that septic system can go. And then they design their site plan according to that. So that is why that is a septic option one. And then there is a septic option. Um, I think on the other side of the building, there, there's another option. Um, it's not shown on the site plan, but um, there, there are a couple of different options of where that septic system can go. Um, so I mean, say for instance, if it, if it needs to shift, you know, four or five feet, then you know, that, that's kind of understood that the building is still meeting the requirements and the intent of the site plan that it has to meet. Now, if it has to shift completely to the other side of the building, or excuse me, of the property, the whole parking lot has to change and there's a lot of major changes that have to be done to the site, then that would require a site plan amendment that would have to go back through the same exact process. Does that answer your question, Melissa?
Yeah, it does. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Very good. Council members, any additional questions? I do have, uh, a couple of real quick ones, Stacy. Uh, David, let me ask you, is, is the audio breaking up on you?
Um, sometimes, but it's been mostly good.
Okay, very good. So I'm having, I'm having lots of, of audio issues, but we'll struggle through that one. Stacy, we talked about the importance of maintaining appearance uh, as you come into Louisville. And I realize this is not in the gateway area, but it's still an exit ramp that people will be using to, to come into our town. Are we confident that the buffer that is being proposed there, um, will provide the adequate screening so we don't look like a number of those areas, when you, when you drive down forty, uh, around Clemens, you have buildings that are right up on the road and they just, they're really eyesore and they, they detract immensely from the, uh, the, the, I guess, the appearance of the community. Are we confident that the buffers that we're requiring and the planes we're requiring will, um, will maintain cer- a certain amount of, 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 uh, screening on that exit ramp?
I am, Mayor. That, that is the intent of the thoroughfare overlay is to provide that protection, um, for our highways and you know, what you see when you drive through Louisville, even if it's just down four twenty-one and you're not exiting. Um, so, so that's what, like I said, what the intent of the thoroughfare overlay is. Um, but then also, um, with them being next to residential, um, they are required to maintain that screening all the way around the property. Um, and even, even have a street yard on the front that wouldn't necessarily along Williams Road, it, isn't going to, you know, completely be a visual buffer that we don't want that for security reasons, but, um, there are plantings along Williams that, that are required in order to dress up the property, um, and, and make it presentable.
Walking that property and, and I did from the church side and then down, there's a, there's a residential property that, that sits down below it a little bit and walking that, it looks like the topography, the land lends itself to natural screening. Uh, I believe there's, there's, uh, I don't want to call it a berm, but certainly an elevation and then it falls back down into, um, the site itself. Will there, um, will their site grading change any of the net of the topo that's kind of providing screening and protection?
No, it's my understanding they're only, uh, the plan is to only take out what they need to take out for the building, the parking area and the septic area. Um, this is low density, so they shouldn't have to have a stormwater control measure. Um, but again, that is an engineering review that, that would come after approval. Um, but they, they, the plan is to, to keep all of, because it's, it's heavily wooded, um, right now. And so the, the plan is to keep, um, all of the trees that they can and only take out what they need to take out, um, on the property.
Very good. Just one last question. Um, if at some point in the future, they want to expand their buildings or their parking lots, would that have to come back through us for a site plan amendment?
Yes, sir, they would.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Stacy. Any more? Ms. Hunt, yes.
Yeah, just for clarification, I'm trying to visually understand. I also went and walked the site. Um, you, when you're driving on four twenty-one and you pass Kaplan, they've got a warehouse, um, back there. Is that the thoroughfare thing that you're referring to, the thoroughfare overlay where you can't really see much of that building? Is that part of the, is that something like we're talking about as far as?
It is. It, it is, but, but Kaplan's was, um, there prior to the incorporation of Louisville. So, um, they're probably grandfathered use, even though they do. Um, Fred is shaking his head, but, um, it, it didn't, it didn't go through, the planning wasn't established yet. They didn't have a planning board, but it did go through the city, um, for planning approval back in that time.
Okay. And then, okay, continue follow-up, could, um, and no facade requirements on that, on those, on that north end? Of the building.
On the north end, that would be on the back of the property.
Yeah.
Back of the building.
But when you're exiting off the ramp, you would, it, there's potential to see it if there's not proper, if this buffering thoroughfare overlay somehow gets, you know, the downpouring from the road.
Yeah, the planning board didn't feel that on, on those sides of the building, that facade requirements would be requi- should be required because of the, the heavy buffer screening requirements that are required.
Thank you.
Ms. Foster.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah, someone, uh, I think the mayor's question reminded me of one other thing. Stacy, we outsourced several things as a town, one of which is the, the erosion control and getting those permits through the city Winston-Salem, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So could you just, um, that happens at what point in time?
After, uh, they get approval, site plan approval, rezoning approval from the town, then they go to the city, um, to apply for their erosion control permit. Um, they can't get any permits, uh, building permits or anything before they have an NCDOT permit. The erosion control permit, which they have to submit engineer plans for, and then also the stormwater permit that they also have to submit plans for. Um, but the town, we, we are, we handle stormwater. Um, obviously, NCDOT handles their own driveway permits, being that this is a state road. But, um, so, so what happens is, is upon approval, I send all of city staff. Um, I work with Dora and we'll get the ordinance together and, and make it like a packet of this is what exactly was approved. These are conditions that were approved and we send it to the city Winston-Salem, so they have it on file. Um, so when they go and apply for those permits, um, they, they put them up against what was approved. Um, I have an actual stamped approved copy with my signature is what I send them. Um, they put it up against and compare it and to make sure that what they are putting forth for the erosion control plan is what was approved by the town. And so then, once they get erosion control permits, um, and start that work, then they're allowed to go and submit for building permits.
Great. Thank you. And then finally, you said on the, on again, your staff report that the technical review committee comments would be remedied prior to.
Right. And, and, um, let's see, I have those. Uh, most of those are, you know, water, uh, extension has to go through city Winston-Salem, uh, utilities department. Um, erosion control is, is a generic comment that anything, any grading over ten thousand square feet, you have to get a grading erosion control permit. Um, there were some comments for fire. Most of those are for the building. Um, as far as sprinkler systems, it's, most of those are interior, um, to the building, uh, requirements for those. Um, for NCDOT, uh, they, a driveway permit is required and give the point of contact for those. Also encroachment agreements required for utilities, that sort of thing. Um, stormwater again appears to be low density, um, and then, and then, um, fire. Chief Needham didn't have any comments at this time. Um, and then again, utilities was, was their backflow preventer required. They're, they're generic. Um, so there were no, uh, major red flag or a- any type of comments from the technical review committee. They were all uh, mostly generic for a commercial review.
Thank you.
Ms. Walsh.
Uh, yes. Oh, um, in advanced supplies, Mr. Cooper and, and the other gentleman, thank you for being here this evening. I know you must have thought, we'll never get this thing built. But I did have one question and that was concerning any lighting pollution since it will be close to residential. Stacy, can you address that? Do we have requirements for, um, lighting? We had that to come up years ago.
Yes, ma'am.
Some pollution.
We do. Um, there, we do have lighting requirements in our ordinance for non-residential structures that they will have to follow.
All right. So no flood lighting or?
Right, yes, like shoebox cut off, not to illuminate all neighboring properties, um, that sort of thing. That all commercial properties in town would have to abide by.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Council members, any other questions? Very, very good. We'll move now to the public participation in the hearing. Uh, those of you who wish to speak in support of the petition and the rezoning, I'd ask you to go ahead and speak now. Um, Hank, will we handle this with hand raising or how do you want to handle the recognition of those wishing to speak in support of the petition?
Okay, we want to have a hand raised now if you want to speak in favor of the petition.
Mayor.
Mayor.
I, I would like to invite, uh, Mr. Cooper to, uh, address the council in any shape, form or fashion that he might want to at this time. We've only asked him one question and afford him the opportunity. I know he's in support of the project, but let him lead out.
That's why, that's why we've offered the opportunity to speak in support of the project. Mr. Cooper, if you have anything to say, this is a great time to say it.
Well, I appreciate that opportunity. We appreciate as well that the council did allow us last month the opportunity to postpone this as my almost entire family did end up with COVID and that was a horrible event that we have gotten to the other side of. We appreciate your patience in that. We do want everyone to know that, you know, we live in the community with you. This is my son that I have with me to my left and my son-in-law that works with me to the right, and we all live in this same community with you. You know, we don't want just a big ugly building thrown up in the middle of Louisville either. You know, we do want it to be something that, you know, we could be proud of as where we work. And it's also a part of our community where we live. So we had made, you know, some concessions to try to help keep the property to where, you know, it wasn't such a big eyesore from highways. You know, or anything like that and add things to it to try to help beautify it and try to help it be as small of an impact into that area as we could for our neighbors that would be around us. We appreciate the opportunity to bring this before the council. Thank you.
Could we get your, for the record, your name and address, please?
I'm sorry, it's Mike Cooper at seven forty-one Eden Rock Road in Louisville.
All right, thank you.
We do have Mr. Klosterman wishes to say something at this time.
Klosterman, please state your name and address.
Thank you, Brad Klosterman, sixteen forty-four Ranola Road, Winston Salem, North Carolina. I am an agent for the applicant and if I would be so permitted to share my screen, I have a short presentation, like to present.
You can go ahead. Three minutes or less, sir.
I will, um, let me get this going. I don't want to be too redundant because Stacy does such a great job presenting. But I did want to touch on, on a couple of items that, that to clarify some of the questions that came up. Just to, you know, just kind of a refresh, you know, we started this back in April of last year. Just try to get something in front of the planning board and start trying to give an idea of who is making this presentation. We have a third, third generation company, residents of Louisville and wanting to move their, their headquarters to the town. This is our existing facility, knowing that, and they went in this knowing that they were going to have to do something a little better than what they have. And, and we have some examples of, of things that we want to bring to the, to Louisville. I won't belabor this. That's why we came, you know, this is in the comprehensive plan as commercial. I think what we are, we've already talked about that in depth. And again, this is the timeline that we started back in, in April. And you all graciously allowed us to defer because of the illness and that's why we are here tonight. Just one blowing the, the site plan up and going over a couple of items. So you'll see that line that just popped in. That is, that's the property boundary of the closest residentially zoned parcels with homes on them. Of course, this, the church to the left or to the west is, is residentially zoned, but it is a, an institutional type use. That, that is a sixty-foot distance here, sixty-foot right away. And then it becomes over a hundred and ten foot right away. And that is, as one of the council members mentioned, that is one of the reasons why the, the building got pushed to this portion of the site is to provide that a little bit more distance from, from residential properties. And there's been a lot of talk tonight about the twenty-foot road buffer. And then what we did in the back, because it does drop off and is the low area as well as the, you know, they don't need that, that space. They've, they've, they've marked off the entire northern boundary as well as of course the, the required twenty-foot buffers on the east and, and western portions of, of the site. And then, of course, we talked also about the, the twenty-foot. But really the reality is, is this is about a forty-foot additional separation from the property line to the backside of the buffer. And then there's going to be another twenty-foot to the front of the building where, where we start. So we, we are effectively sixty-foot off the, off the front right away. And again, that is.
If you, if you'll speed up just a little bit, please.
Okay, that, that's the property bounty. Of course, that's the, the, the building as well. And then the remaining portion, while it can be developed from, from a flexibility standpoint, that the intent is to have the building here as, as position of the site plan. I'll skip through those. We, as Stacy had agreed, those are the items that we agreed to through the planning process. And these are two examples. There was, there's definitely discussion about the front porch, brickwork, knowing that the, the aluminum siding is not going to be acceptable. This can be more like the board and batten that you see in downtown or the siding that you see on, on the picture to the right. And then in terms of traffic impact, just a simple comparison of what is actually permitted there today and single-family detached. It comes out to approximately sixty-seven trips per day. And what we're asking for, actually the generator on it for Flex Light Industrial is actually less, it's fifty-nine trips per day. Mr. Cooper, also, there was mentioned in the presentation that the employees take the vehicles home. And so there is a overall decrease as well from what you would typically see in a, in a light industrial space. And then, and then finally, there is a, they, they have two locations. They have one in High Point, one here, and that also separates, you know, the, their sixty-person staff into two, so locations. So the impact also is not as great. And, and I'll wrap up with that. If you all have any questions for me regarding the planning and what it went, went, went through, that's fine. You can ask, direct those towards me if you have anything specific to business. Mr. Cooper obviously is here and can answer for himself and is probably a lot better than I.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Klosterman. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in support of the petition? Ms. Klosterman, yeah, thank you very much. Anyone else wishes to speak in support of the petition? If not, anyone wish to speak in opposition to the petition, please raise your hand and we'll take you in order as Hank can see it on his screen. Anybody wishing to speak in opposition, if you'll raise your hand, please. Hank, I'm sorry, you're muted.
Have Mr. Aaron Hutmacher, if I'm saying his name correctly, I'm willing to allow him to speak.
Very good. Mr. Hutmacher, if you'll state your name and address, please.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, excellent. My name, okay, good evening. My name is Aaron Hutmacher and I live in three fifteen Dab Road in Louisville. Do you want me to go ahead and start?
Yes, sir, please.
All right, this, this proposed change is within five hundred feet of my residence and directly impacts myself and neighbors. I and over two hundred and sixty of our neighbors have signed a digital petition that opposed the change of zoning of, to the property at seven seven one Williams Road, which I forwarded earlier in an email in the month to both city council, council and to you, to you also, sir. This business will affect our delicate commute in which residents will pass by it. And instead of seeing beautiful trees, we will see a metal building. The business will add to the traffic congestion that is already growing due to extended, expanded housing growth and is expected to grow and even more in the coming year. This business will be also right across from the street from Dab Road. Dab Road, Dab Road's only available school bus stop, creating, creating another potential hazard. It will further affect pedestrian bicycle traffic by creating increased risk as the residents now have to contend with this new business and its associated traffic to get to and from the downtown area as there are no sidewalks or shoulders in this area. This is the gateway to the historic portion of Williams Road and visitors will be greeted with this industrial-type metal building. And the only thoroughfare that allows access to the subdivisions of Melville Estates, Louisville Trails and the future Gameway Estates. With this, with their webpage showing that they have more than sixty employees and the Google Earth view showing at least twenty-five vehicles in their parking lot currently, like and another neighbor counted thirty when they drove by, there's no way this parking lot with only seventeen spaces can handle this. This business does not fit into the community plan outlined in the comprehensive plan. I understand what was said earlier, but furthermore, leaving it to resi, to residential development or open space may be a better use. The proposed comprehensive plan talks about the perception of Louisville residents and their vision in the coming decade. And it states that residents describe Louisville as quite, quaint, quiet suburban and bedroom community. This business will bring in workers and traffic to this area. Being that this location is such a public area and the main access to three subdivisions, this does not fit the description of any of this. If you look at the current draft proposal, I understand it's a draft, the comprehensive plan on page twelve, the land use. This lot, lot does not say commercial, it says residential. On pages thirty-one, under conceptual growth plan, the area is enclosed in a large circle around the bridge, but it's, meets none of the goals for the conceptual growth ideas. Is not listed in the preferred growth on page thirty-two or forty-one or on page forty-six, is not highlighted under the commercial, commercial intent. If its intent was to be commercial, should have the, if the, but the area was intended to be, it should have been rezoned as commercial earlier, if that is the preferred use, so that when we look at the residential zone, we don't see it as residential, we know it's commercial. The thought crosses our minds and several of our neighbors' minds at the southern end of Louisville, just over, over the bridge of four twenty-one will become the industrial side of town. We have limited open spaces and parks. There are no sidewalks or shoulders. We have multiple developments with limited pedestrian access to downtown except by walking along a road that has little to no shoulder, shoulder or sidewalks. Furthermore, once one of these types of has come, more are sure to fall, and how can we say no if we said yes to this business? Approval of this building will set a precedence for the type of buildings on this side of town and throughout Louisville that are not within the downtown quarter, quarter. If this building was tucked away somewhere, that would be fine, but it is along a major route. We are just too close to downtown to let this become a permanent representation of Louisville. The comprehensive plan states the town has an emphasis on open space and natural beauty, but we would be tearing down a natural barrier in the heavily wooded lot to put in an industry-type building. Approval of rezoning of this lot from residential to commercial is not what I or many of our neighbors are expected. If this is rezoned and the building is built, then what property in Louisville will be next? This may be the right business for Louisville, but is not the right location. Thank you for your time and putting in your questions. That is all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hutmacher. Anyone else wish to speak in opposition to the petition? Please raise your hand.
So far, nothing.
Anyone wish else to speak in opposition? Please raise your hand. And I'm assuming folks know how to raise your hand if you're on Zoom. It's a little icon down on the bottom. Hank, do we have anybody joining us by phone?
I do not have. I had someone, but they are gone.
Okay, very good. So everybody, everybody who is participating here is participating in the Zoom, so we could see their hand if they wish to speak.
That is correct.
Okay, one final call. Anyone else wish to speak in opposition? Very good. With that, we'll close the public hearing. Council members, any additional questions for Stacy or petitioner if we want to? Stacy, I just had one that jumped out at me in Mr. Hutmacher's presentation. We, while we have not seen the draft plan of the, the comprehensive plan review coming at us here shortly, he made reference to that this site is identified as residential in the revision that we're, that's coming to us.
Yeah, and the preferred land use plan, now it, it does say residential for, at this point, all the way down Williams and, and the town limits.
Okay. Okay.
So I have a follow-up to that question then, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
The comprehensive plan draft that's going to be coming is one that has been generated by the planning board. Is that in, in part, is that right?
No, not necessarily. Most of it has come from residents, not, not entirely just planning board.
Yeah, but they're familiar with what's been developed. Is that, is that accurate or no?
Yes, sir.
All right, so they, even though it's a draft and hadn't been approved yet by them, it, it was in their heads whenever they made this recommendation, I'm assuming. Would that be accurate?
Yes, that would be accurate.
All right, thanks.
They, I mean, they didn't have the actual draft of the document, but throughout this process, they have been informed and led to all of the, the information sheets and everything that had come out of the Louisville Tomorrow Project throughout the last, or throughout the project for the cop plan.
Yes, but the reference that was just made, they would have been familiar with it, is that?
I, I believe so.
All right, thanks. And did it come up during their public hearing?
I think it was brought up by a resident, but it did not generate much discussion for the planning board because of all the, the past comprehensive plans.
All righty, thank you.
Stacy, help me real quick and thank you, Dr. Satter, for, for pulling that out. So what I'm understanding is that currently this site is zoned commercial, as we've talked about. Before commercial use, is, is identified for commercial use, my, yeah, my apologies.
Yes, sir.
But in the, in the, the draft comprehensive plan that the planning board has reviewed, that designation is to residential.
Right, but they, they just got the draft in December.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Stacy, say it again. I apologize. I'm, I'm cutting out here.
They just got the draft of the entire plan in December.
Okay.
They have been, you know, made aware of, of things coming along through the process, but the, the draft of the cop, the, the proposed cop plan was not available until last month.
Okay, so they.
Hearing was held in October.
Gotcha. So, so when they, when they had their public hearing and made the recommendation, they were aware that the comp plan coming forward by residents had this site identified as potential residential use.
Yes.
So I'll ask you the, probably the obvious question. How should we view potentially the planning boards interpret, not interpretation, how they embracing the recommendations of the new comprehensive plan on this site?
I think they've taken into consideration as well that, that the new plan is not the adopted plan. And so they're going by the most recent adopted plan that we have, which shows this as the preferred land use as commercial.
Sure, and I'm really asking you to be a, a mind reader here and I apologize for doing that. But in February or so, when they've had a chance to review the draft comprehensive plan, will they take a look at this particular site and say, oh, gosh, this should have been residential because that's what's being proposed in the plan? Or will they say, you know, we really are going to not pay attention to the plan itself and keep it commercial?
Well, I think that's why they proposed and wanted the conditions to be placed on the property, so it does lessen the impact on nearby residential.
Okay. Thank you. Council members, any other questions?
And Mayor, I think the, another idea of this was that they wanted this to be the last. If you, if you look on the old preferred land use maps, there, first of all, planning board was aware that this application was pending. And all, and that the idea was that the uses that are presently were, are currently, as we sit tonight on the preferred land use map shown as commercial, that that would be the end of that, that there was this concern about the potential domino effect was something that I think the planning board or that, that the new comprehensive plan. Uh, this concern about the potential domino effect was something that I think the planning board or that, that the new comprehensive plan seeks to address.
Okay, Bo again, I'm sorry, you were cutting out, I'll, let me, let me say this back to. That you're saying that, but you're saying that potentially, let me, let me see if I can summarize it. You're saying basically that the, the planning board took in consideration. That, um, there may be a residential recommendation coming out of our draft plan when they placed. The restrictions or the, the requirements on this site when they approved it.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm not sure that's exactly what I, I was saying, what I was trying to say was that the idea that. Uh, and the concern that was expressed by Mr. Hutmacher was among, among a few others. Was that this would be, be the beginning of a stretch of commercial rezonings down Williams Road and. Um, I think the planning board and the draft comprehensive plan seeks to indicate that that would not be the case. That, uh, this application has been in place, uh, or being, been considered since April of last year. And, uh, this was gonna be, this is the end of it. That it's not going, commercial development is not going to extend down Williams Road.
Thank you. Doc Satter.
I, I guess I'm confused, uh, in terms of the timeline here, so. I, I thought what I was hearing, he, he, the citizen who spoke said that. He was making reference to, I think he said page twelve of a document. That showed this is being changed from commercial to, to residential in, in, in the draft plan. So the question that I thought I asked was, how could a citizen become aware of this ahead of the planning board? And if the, and, and if in fact the planning board was aware of this. Then clearly it would have been something that they would have been thinking about whenever they made their recommendation now. I did hear Stacy say that they were approving it just based on the fact that it had not been adopted, but for no other reason. Uh, i- is that right, Stacy, or, or no?
Well, uh, uh, throughout the entire process, we have had a Louisville Tomorrow webpage, um, through the, the town of Louisville website. That has been informing residents of, you know, where we are through the process, it's just been building the entire time. There's been maps, there's been framework plan maps, future land use plan maps that have been posted to the website. Um, through, throughout the entire process of the comp plan update that, that, um, residents and are allowed and, you know, recommended to go and look at. Um, and, you know, more recently, the, um, the draft plan has been made public. Through it, through the survey, um, that I talked about last week. Um, so, so any resident right now has, has access to the draft plan.
But I thought I heard you say at the public hearing of the planning board, this concern was raised.
By a resident, yeah, through, because all of those framework plans, the, the future land use plan maps and have been available on the website for, for everyone to kind of review.
Yeah, so then the assumption, and that's a bad thing to do, but the assumption might be then therefore. All of the members of the planning board had available all of the same information.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
All right, thanks.
Council members?
Yeah.
Any thoughts or comments, Ms. Foster?
Alright, yeah, um, I, I did review because to Stacy's point, to Stacy's point, the draft that dropped planning board is on the website. And the. Information has been provided throughout the process, as she said. Um. There, there is an area where I had my hiccup around the rezoning component. I think, I think Mr. Cooper and I think, um, Brad, Mr. Klosterman, I, I think it seems to me you all have been a. Great petitioner, you know, in terms of accommodations and working with the process, et cetera, so thank you very much for that. I'm talking about as, as council members, the, the rezoning component. In the, in the draft document that's about to come to us, the conceptual growth ideas that Mr. Hutmacher was talking about. That this particular area is circled and in this particular conceptual growth ideas, it talks about. Um, this was developed as an interim step to creating a growth strategy. And the idea is to embrace small town character that's uniquely Lewisville, find opportunities that come with them being intentional. Grow in a way that promotes a livelier downtown, connect people and places through sidewalks, trails, bike paths. Tie parks, open spaces and events to how people experience Lewisville. So this, along with very, various other things I've seen in this document, as well as what we have already approved with the master parks. In the master parks plan, if you'll remember, council talks about. We are low in terms of the number of pocket parks, neighborhood parks. So my concern just from the, the greatest and best use. Um, staying at that rezoning perspective is there's an opportunity with that. This location, that growth opportunity location to look at connectivity with those residential areas. Especially if it's gonna stay residential beyond that area, connecting that to downtown, um, making it more pedestrian friendly. Cycling friendly, et cetera. So that's what I've been wrestling with is the site versus obviously, um, the rezoning component. So that's more of a discussion point, I don't have questions, that's just. Me being transparent about my process.
Council members? Any additional discussion? Very good. Ms. Foster, just one question, I, I, I think I was following you, again, I apologize, that was, my audio was cutting out. Are you? Are you're suggesting in your thought process that this particular site should be retained as potential parkland?
Potentially, yes. I think that there is a potential for a greater and best use given what. Comprehensive plans in the past, as well as this newest material is providing, but I.
And so this would be assuming that the town wanted to purchase the property from the owner.
Right, there are a lot of moving parts, obviously, to that, but I'm just, again, looking at what's coming forward with the most recent information.
Okay. Very good. Council members? Ms. Hunt?
So we did, I believe, adopt the park plan recently and they, and they did talk about these pockets of park neighborhood. Stacy, you may have to help me with some of the language, um, but like neighborhood parks, was this one of the areas? I know that down Dole Road was kind of an area that was kind of defined for parks and, and, and neighborhood gathering. But was this area one of those on the, on that circle map from the park plan?
I'm trying to bring it up, um, to take a look at the map specifically, there we go. Um, but I, I believe some of the recommendations were, we, we have a lot of parks. Um, centralized to the downtown area already with Shalford Square, um, Jack Warren Park and Joni Moser are just, you know. Within walking distance from downtown, um. So I'm scrolling to the map, I, I don't want to speak out of turn or anything. Um. Well, I missed it. But I think essentially some pocket, pocket parks or neighborhood parks are kind of meant to be. In subdivisions to serve those residents that they, uh, that, that live there. Um, neighborhood parks would be something that, um, or pocket parks, for instance, would be something that maybe an HOA would maintain. Um, that those, those residents would, it would be strictly for those residents, not necessarily a public park. Um, so potential neighborhood park locations is, is, um, in like the south quadrant, south of Dole Road. Um, around the Conrad Road area, um, on the western side of town. Robin Hood Road and then north in the, uh, Viana Dozier and Yackenville Road area, so this is not. Um, exactly an area that is circled in the park plan, uh, to be a potential for a neighborhood park location. Um.
That's helpful, thank you.
So Stacy, I guess that means if we were to prioritize our spending for property for parks, this would not be based on our, our. The plan that we've adapted, adopted recently, this would not be high in priority?
I think, I think the priority would be probably like the north end of town, um, but, but then again, you know, Parks and Rec. Um, I think Mike, might have some input on that as well, the Parks and Rec Board, but. Um, with, with this being so close to Shalford Square and Jack Warren where it's already centralized. Um, I, I don't think that this would be, um, a recommended area for a, a prior, I'm not saying it can be, can be a park, but my. Maybe not necessarily just the first one or the priority out of the plan.
Okay, thank you. Council members? Any other discussion, Ms. Welch?
Um, yes, Stacy, you said, you know, that wasn't the intent, then that the, this of it, this area would become, you know, domino commercial. But, you know, how do you prevent that? I mean, it would be looked at as already happening, so why can't another business? Say that there was that precedent?
Because the comp, the comprehensive plan doesn't recommend it. Um, currently, the adopted plan recommends just this, um, to be, this is like the cutoff of where the, the downtown boundary and the commercial boundary in this area of town should extend to. And then past that, it doesn't recommend any more commercial, so, so that in itself is what I would look at if someone came and even wanted. Um, the property next door, the church property to be rezoned, I wouldn't recommend it because the comp plan doesn't direct me to make that recommendation. Uh, the comp plan specifically says this is kind of where the line is, the preferred land use, the commercial line is to be cut off. Um, and so further down Williams Road, I wouldn't, I wouldn't make the recommendation because our comp plan, which is, which is our vision for the town, it's what we have to follow to make these decisions. Is it consistent with the comprehensive plan? Well, currently, this preferred land use is consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan. The, the properties further down Williams Road, it, it would not be consistent with the plan.
I'm trying to picture, you know, residential, um, wanting to be close to such a commercial property though.
Well, right now, it's, it's, it's zoned residential, but the use is an institutional use, it's, it's a church right next door.
Doc Satter.
Yes, I, I'm just reflecting back to, uh, in, in earlier time when we were talking about. Um, what should go where in town and, and in, in response to councilperson. Well, to the question, I believe she was on the council at the time, if not, she can, she can clarify. But we cut off commercial growth at Shores Garage, if you recall it, Fred probably, I suspect recalls that. And, and, and so we've sort of stuck to that, so you, you know, there was that concern or question raised back during that time is if. You know, Shores is there and if Liberty is there, then why not? Why, why won't it be the case that commercial extends further down Concord Church? And, and we said, no, it won't, because we're not gonna permit it to happen. And so I think that in the same way as Stacy just said, you know, because we would be committed to stop it where, if it's approved, stop. Where it would be, then there wouldn't be that possibility for the domino. The, the last question, it really is my last question of Stacy is. Having, now that the planning board, all the members now have had an opportunity, they've been able, obviously throughout the process to see everything everybody else is seeing. But now that the draft plan's been available to them, have any of them come back and said, oh boy, we made a real mistake, we, we wish we could change our recommendation?
No, they have not.
Okay, thanks.
Ken, Fred, Jane, you may help me here as well. Stacy, I believe early on in our, um, site designations, this was, was designated as highway business. Um, and that would have been, in fact, I believe all corners of that intersection were designated as highway business.
Um, right, that, or commercial, yeah, that's correct.
And we've changed the, we've changed the highway business designation, actually, we've actually down, I don't want to say downsized it, but we've down. We, we've reduced the kind of usage that can go there based upon initially. It could have been a gas station, it could have been a drive-through restaurant, it could have been a number of things, but I think over the course of time, we've eliminated those uses from that particular site, have we not?
Well, it's, it's still highway business with it, with it, um, it would, you know. Technically, if it was a general use rezoning, then it would allow any use that's allowed in highway business, but since it's a conditional zoning. It's only allowing those few, those few uses that I went over in my presentation, those are the only ones that would be allowed. Um, if they wanted something different, they would have to go back through the public hearing process.
Gotcha, thank you. Council members? Any other questions, Ms. Foster?
Just a quick question to clarify what you just heard, said to Stacy. So that's for this particular petitioner, because of the rezoning and the uses, someone else who would come along would have the option to use this. Place, spot for those uses, correct?
The uses in the site plan run with the land, so even if the property is sold to someone else. Um, then they still have to stick with that same site plan and those same uses.
Okay, yep, thank you.
Very good. Council members, any additional questions or thoughts? If not, it's in your court, want to entertain a motion, I'm sorry, I'm just moving, go ahead.
I was gonna say, based on the recommendation from the planning board, I would like to make a motion to approve this as presented.
Smith makes a motion.
I'll suck it.
Mr. Franklin makes the second. Any additional discussion? I, I, I do, I do have some pause. Um, considering that, uh, the information that came forward tonight was that the draft plan identifies this as residential. Um, and it, it, obviously, it's different than the current, current designation now. Um, that causes me a great deal of pause. I'm a little just, just kind of, I don't want to say disappointed in the planning board, but certainly. Um, would expect a little red flag to be presented to us that there was a change. Um, from the draft plan to what they had looked at from the adopted plan. Given us a heads up on that, so that was a little hiccup for me on this. Um, the, um, the, the overall presentation and, and thank you, Mr. Cooper and, um, Mr. Hut. Oh boy, I'll tell you, I was gonna say Hun sucker, but that's a different family, uh, represented here tonight. Um, but the, uh, the, the work you've done to present the building, then the screening you've done. Uh, the, the traffic is actually less than, projected traffic is less than it would be if it was developed residentially as it's allowed. Um, I think all of those indications are that, that you guys evolved in your homework, so with that, any further discussion? Very good, um, Mr. Smithman.
Hi.
Mr. Franklin.
Ah.
Ms. Foster.
I'm a no at this time for my reasons outlined, thank you.
Ms. Welch.
No.
Uh, Ms. Hunt?
No.
Doc Satter. I'm sorry, we froze up. Dr. Satter, I think you are. Frozen here. Or at least on my screen.
Uh, we lost him. I'll look, oh, here he is.
Very good. Okay, Doc Satter. I'm sorry, you're muted, sir.
My internet went out, so I missed what was happening before.
Uh, currently, in the, uh, in the, uh, roll vote. Mr. Smitherman, Mr. Franklin are yeses, Ms. Foster, Ms. Hunt and Ms. Welch are no's.
I'm a yes.
Very good. Um, based on the reason that I stated earlier, I'll be a yes also. And, uh, so this passes four to three with Ms. Foster, Ms. Hunt and Ms. Welch in opposition. Thank you, folks. Alrighty.
Thank you for your consideration of this, number one's input.
Thank you very much.
Hank, we're down to administrative reports, please.
Okay, just one second, I'm wanna see if I can. Okay, one sec, uh, let's go, I was trying to see if I could miss, get them back to attendees, but I'm not finding. Okay, for administrative reports, upcoming events, Shalford Square and town holidays, the only thing I have right now is town offices will be closed on Monday. Um, of next week in observance of Martin Luther King Jr.'s holiday, birthday holiday. Um, for managers report, we do have some more part of grant meeting scheduled, we had one this past Monday. We will have one, two, three, four more by Zoom, the next one is on January twenty-fifth. So, uh, at the. So at the meeting we had last Monday, we encourage those in attendance to continue to come out and participate in that process. Then moving forward in March on the 17th, from 6:30 to 8:30, we're going to have an in-person meeting at the Mary Alice Warren Community Center in the V, the Louisville and the Vienna rooms. That completes my report.
Uh, we've lost the mayor.
Oh, okay. I'll wait for him.
So there's 8:55, mayor disconnected.
I can pick, pick up and drive some of the administrative reports if that helps.
Hey, Mayor Protemo will take over at this point.
Is that, what's the pleasure of the council? Okay, all right. So clerk report, Ms. Moore.
The only thing I've got to report is to remind you that the council retreat is scheduled for February 4th and 5th at the Mary Alice Warren Community Center. The start time on February 4th is at 5 o'clock. And on Saturday, the 5th is at 8:00 a.m.
And we were supposed to get our retreat request to you. Last time we said as soon as possible. You talked about the 20th, but define as soon as possible.
As soon as possible.
I mean, if you can get it to us tonight or tomorrow, the earlier we get it, the better prepared we are to prepare the agenda and to follow up with you if we have any questions regarding your topics.
Yep, exactly. Anything else, Mr. Manager?
No, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Item D, who's handling that? There he is.
Here we have the mayor again.
He's back at 8:56.
Mayor, we just covered the clerk's report unless you want to add anything to that.
You know, the, um, this is interesting because I went back to our Louisville NC site, site to join. And the link to tonight's meeting had already been removed. We're, but we're now to, the set meeting's coming up on the 17th, so I couldn't get back in that way. So thank you, Dor for including the link back. Go back and search out your email to find that, to get back here anyway. I, I think there's a conspiracy tonight to, to make all this happen. Very good. I'm sorry, we are down to, for the good of the order?
No, 12D.
12.
We're approvals at briefing action.
Thank you, Ms. Foster.
We, we had approval of ordinance 2022002, amending budget ordinance 2021001 in an amount of $10,651.37 to replace the fire alarm system at town hall. And then we had another item, resolution 2022001, authorizing a contract for fire, town hall fires, alarm systems to Sage Security Solutions LLC in an amount of $10,651.37.
Very good. Thank you, Hank. Ladies and gentlemen, council members, we're down for the good of the order. If there are any citizens wishing to speak, this is a final opportunity to speak. Here are the phone numbers, 646-558-8656. You can call in and certainly, hopefully, the Zoom link, which is no longer available on our website, is not going to help you. So I don't know how you get in if you're not already in. Hank, do we have anybody who is still connected by Zoom or by phone who wishes to make a comment?
We have seven people, no hands up.
Okay, one final time, folks, if they wish to have a final comment. All right, thank you. If you wish to make written comments, you can always submit them via email to townclerk@lewisvillenc.net. That's townclerk@lewisvillenc.net. Okay, Stace, back to the full screen, if you would, please. Council members, any comments before we have an adjournment? Ms. Foster.
Yes, it was a little confusing earlier because we rearranged the schedule, you might recall. So we missed item 10, unfinished business board and committee update. The good news is it's this big. We were, we were ambivalent about even doing it anyway because Hank and I in a work group weren't able to get together. So just a commercial for, we will be bringing forward some information, but also asking you guys for some information prior to the retreat and also putting an item on the retreat agenda to go deep into getting some council input on what to do next with some board and committee direction. That's it.
Very good. Thank you. Sorry, I missed that. Sadler.
Yes, I saw an email from Ryan Lake this afternoon about the preparation for the storm that's forecast. It might be helpful for him just to make, if, if, if he's able to make a comment regarding preparation for the road maintenance and all that during the, during the event.
Yes, sir. I made a phone call out to our contractor today just to confirm that he was ready. In fact, while I spoke to him, he was checking all of his lights and greasing all of his fittings on his trucks. He's ready, he's just waiting for, he follows the, he follows what DOT does, so he's just waiting for that phone call. He'll give me a call as soon as he's getting ready to load up.
And I saw that you and David were putting your blades on the town trucks. And you know, there, at least I was not fully aware of how you guys assisted during these type events. So it might be helpful for folks to, to hear that as well.
Sure, um, the larger trucks, our contractors, obviously, they hit the big roads and we go around, I guess, after they've started their process and we'll go and, and maybe push the smaller cul-de-sacs where they have a hard time either backing down or maneuvering around those cul-de-sacs.
All right, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Ryan, if somebody experiences a concern, I know Monday is a holiday. I guess that's Sunday night, Sunday, Sunday night, Monday is going to be when the bulk of our issues are going to arise. How would they get a hold of us or you to, to, to report something?
The best way to contact me, because I can get it on my cellphone, probably is just email me and just let me know what that address is or where that area is. And for those listening, my, my email address is publicworks, that's with an S, publicworks@lewisvillenc.net. They can also, they can also leave me a voicemail on my phone, on my phone, because it also links to my cellphone. My office number is 336-945-1020.
Very good. Ryan, will you maybe work with Stacy to put that information up on our Facebook page and maybe also on our website tomorrow?
Yes, sir.
That'd be great. I appreciate it. Mr. Smithman.
Um, this is directed toward Ryan. Would, will that new app that we have where we report stuff that we won't done in the town, would that work as well?
It, it would. That's a good point. That's, that's perfect. I'm glad you brought that up. So.
Can you say what that is for people?
Yeah, so that's C Click Fix. You can find it on our website. I don't know exactly where. I'm not, well, David's.
It's under reported problem, Ryan.
Okay, thank you, Hank. David, David showing us his on his phone, I guess.
There appeared to be a, a woman in the top right-hand corner there, David.
Mayor.
I don't want to call any close attention to that one. Okay, so on our website, on our mobile. Okay. Ryan, you'll put that information up on our Facebook page.
Yeah. Ryan, it's, it's worth noting too, that everybody is, they're, they're coping with what we may or may not get. And hopefully, it'll be light if we do. We start central to the city and the state roads and then work out because it really doesn't do with anything to go into neighborhoods and start clearing if you can't get out to the highway. So you're going to start from state roads and then work into the neighborhoods. And that way that we have people, as you get further out, they have a clear way to get back into the state roads.
Very good. Thank you, Hank.
Can I add one more thing just for the consideration? The website is the Duke Energy reporting. Phone number, Ryan's shaking his head. So just making that part of the packet of.
Yeah, I'm going to have.
Okay.
I'm going to have Jean put that post that on social media and the website.
Very good. Ryan, we have a cot set up for you. David, Brian, Hal, all. In fact, this is, you can use our brand new community center as your command post.
Yeah.
Very good. Council members, anything else this evening? If, Mr. Franklin.
As I do each or every other month, I like to encourage folks to give blood if you're able to do that. Right now, the Red Cross is facing a national emergency shortage of blood. And I want to thank the mayor for showing up today and giving blood at the same location I did. Imagine my surprise when I walked in and he was in front of me. So we're both a pint low tonight, and that's one of the reasons we've been bouncing around a little bit.
Thank you, Ms. Franklin. In fact, the reminders you give prompted me to want to go down and be sure I did that today. If you haven't noticed, that's why I'm a little pale in the face. But it is, it is, actually, that's not true at all, folks. It's, it's painless, it's easy. The folks down there really know what they're doing. In fact, you don't have to wait until next month when they come back or next week when they come back, you can call the Red Cross and get the closest location to us. Just put in 27023 and it'll give you the locations that you can make a blood donation here within probably no more than a 10-minute drive. Please consider, thank you, Mr. Franklin, for those constant reminders. It's an important thing right now. Anything else, council members? Mr. Smith, don't hold up your app.
As a add-on to that, I gave blood yesterday. Anybody that gives blood this month has a chance to win tickets to the football.
Super Bowl.
Super Bowl, yeah.
Really? I never got, I got a card for a free donut, so. I'll pass that along to our deputies.
Enjoy the cheesecake today, Mike.
We worked this one pretty good tonight, I think. Thank you, Mr. Franklin, yeah. Council members, anything else that we want to discuss this evening?
Not discuss, just end on a more serious note. So, and I'm sure you're aware of this, mayor and others. There, the community hospitals are asking for elected official support. Mayor, you're shaking your head. So feel free to jump in here. It has to do with them being overwhelmed and asking for leadership to make communities aware that there is an ask for the simple things of masking, distancing, and please getting vaccinated and boosting. So based on what I'm seeing, those leaders asking of us, I'd like to put that out there.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. I appreciate that reminder. In our countywide discussions on Tuesday, they did a comparison for the Delta virus variant when it was at its peak. And they were, we were seeing 1,500 new cases a day, new positives a day. And with the Omicron violent variant, we're now seeing 5,000 cases, positive cases a day. The hospitals, as you've mentioned, Ms. Foster, are, are, are full, not just with COVID issues, but the regular seasonal flus and a number of other things. So folks, please, you know, I, I know we're not going to say anything probably that's going to convince somebody to run out and get their booster, but please wear your mask, please do social distancing, be conscious of the fact that, that, that hopefully we'll be at this peak in the next few weeks or so, and it'll start subsiding. But in the meantime, stay safe, keep your family safe, and keep your neighbors safe and yourself safe. Thank you, Ms. Foster, for that reminder. Anything else, council members?
Mayor, if the council's finished with their comments, I do want to make one comment regarding, I think you had made a comment that the, the link was disappeared, had disappeared from the website. Please keep in mind, everybody who is watching this, we have a community calendar of events and those links will be on, on the community calendar. And so it continues to be there for this meeting this evening.
Gotcha. So you got to go to the community calendar versus on the, the landing page where, where we normally see it immediately.
Right, they're always going to be on the community calendar.
Very good.
I had something, mayor, really quick.
Yes, ma'am.
Just a quick plug to those of the residents that are watching. You can find it on Facebook, you can find it on the website. There is a final public involvement survey out for the draft comprehensive plan. So please go and, and do your part and take that survey. It has links to the draft. If you, if you haven't already found that, and it's, it's got a good, high-level overview and some interactive questions and stuff like that. So I just recommend our residents to go out and take a look at that draft plan.
Stacy, I want to do, also want to do a plug for our part of meetings.
Well, I think Hank did that earlier, but the schedule is the, the next one.
Was that when I disappeared from sight?
It, it may have.
I went over that manager report.
Yeah, the next, the next one is January 25th. It is on Zoom and that link can be found on the website.
Very good. And folks, please, please attend this. We, we need to have a lot of folks participating in these part of meetings because that reflects on how they evaluate our, the, the validity of our proposal and the community participation in our proposal. So I think there are four or five opportunities to do that, so please, please do that. Anything else?
Mayor, I mentioned on the 5th, during the retreat, I'm going to have to excuse myself for some period of time, an hour or two. Late morning, I'm not sure how you've decided to address the schedule. You did something about an early lunch or something like. I don't think that needs to be done, you know, for my sake, but I just wanted you to, folks to remember that I'm going to have to leave for some period of time during the retreat.
Very good. We've made a cushy place for you down the hall in the conference room.
All righty.
Very good. Council members, staff, anything else this evening? As I often say, could there possibly be anything else? If not, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Mr. Franklin makes the motion. Ms. Smith makes the second. Any further discussion? Ms. Welch.
Hi.
Mr. Smithman.
Hi.
Ms. Hunt. Ms. Foster.
Hi, thanks, everyone.
Franklin. Doc Sadler.
Bye.
Mayor's eye. Thank you, folks. We're adjourned.